Okay, I'm gonna call the Board of Education Work Session for March 20th, 2023. The order, we do have a board. And I will ask that Ms. LaBrick give us our indication today.
Yes, last one. Gracious that, we thank you for helping Lobeing as well as this opportunity to serve our community. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we keep what is best for the students in this community at the forefront of our thoughts and actions. Please help us to have clear and open minds as we strive to move forward in the work in which we are tasked today. Thus we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Ms. Anderson, if you would lead us in our pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and free of justice for all. Thank you.
Thank everyone for joining us today, watching, also all of our board members that are here today. We appreciate the hard work you've really put in today. We have several things on our agenda, so we really won't spend much time except going right to our agenda. However, I'd like to ask Dr. Winport, if you would, can give us a little information about the student nominee that you discussed? And maybe Ms. Hayes could chime in on that?
Yes, good afternoon, thank you Chairman Williams, Board members, good to see you today. If you recall, at our education day, which was held at Ramal County Central High School, State Representative Sossaman made a friendly announcement for us to be on the lookout for awards and nominations of students for the Governor of North Carolina. And there apparently are several that are quite interesting, one of which was brought to my attention by Ms. Hayes. She reached out to me about the Laurel Reef Award. And that award is given in honor of individuals who have made contributions, significant contributions in the area of athletics and sports. Ms. Hayes recommended that we nominate Ms. Chanti Jackson, who, if you recall, was recognized at our February meeting for breaking the national records in certain track events. And by all accounts, could be a future Olympian if she keeps up the pace she's at. But I reached out to the governor's office to get some additional details, and they encouraged us to apply, to nominate her for this award. And I was able to get all of the information for the application process, which is fairly extensive. It includes letters of recommendation from both from her coach and the principal of the high school and some other supporting documents. And we thought it would be wonderful if the board as a whole would also complete a letter of recommendation on her behalf. And I took the liberty of drafting that letter, and I've given copies to Ms. Williams for your consideration. Happy to share that with each of you. You have hard copies here tonight, so that if the board's pleasure, we could actually get those signed this evening, and I could get the nomination completed this week. So happy to try to answer any questions, I think that covers most of it.
Ms. Anderson, did you want to add anything to that?
That was pretty all encompassing. I just wanted to say, like, I'm so excited to recognize and, you know, promote one of these awesome accomplishments for one of our students. So I'll look forward to many more applications for these possible awards from the governor.
We appreciate you bringing that to our attention. We'll just go right into our... We have someone that walked around saying, "Testing, testing." And I wasn't sure who it was, but I got him introduced, and we have a new student intern. So would someone kind of give us a little background on that? Because I think we heard something about that possibility a few months ago.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited, and I think I made that perfectly clear earlier, just how excited we are to have our star team. We have 11 student interns, three different areas, and one being our marketing program, one our device repair, and one our instructional team. And they have been on the job now about three weeks, doing a great job. But we have Emily here with us today. Emily, come up. And so Emily has been working with Kevin Waller. And of course, a lot of Kevin's work is working with device repair. But I think we thought today would be a great opportunity to have her come up just to see how the operation works when we're preparing for a board meeting. So Emily, would you like to say anything to the board?
Just thank you so much for this opportunity. This has been really informative, and I feel like going into the future, going into college and doing more internship jobs would be really helpful for the experience we learn how to do.
Welcome, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing her today, and I guess we have additional interns that we're gonna be introducing to you later. And we're just super excited, Emily, to have you and the others on board.
Excellent. Thank you. Next on our agenda is item 201, Houseville 219. I don't think it's gotten out of the Education Committee yet, but it does affect Graham County Public Schools and public schools across our state. And so we thought maybe needed to look at it and see if we had questions, if we had concerns, and then share with our legislative people. So I'll just open that up. I know Mr. Peace, you know a little bit about it from the North Carolina School Association, if you want to start with that?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Excuse me. At our last meeting, I passed out a handout really from the school association that missed that. Where he talked about the, talked about two sections of this bill. There's actually seven sections, but section six and seven deals specifically to what charters want from us. And the bottom line is they want a lot. And I sort of went through the list of what they are asking for at the last meeting. I think I gave everybody a handout of it. And I just want to say the bottom line, it just is that they want a lot of money from various parts that we have. And one that I didn't really understand was that had to do with the, excuse me, the fund from the, from the, let me see, which one was it? Fund balance. And I don't know all that you can know about, all I want to know about that. And I was hoping that our finance committee might be delighted as to what that could mean for us.
Absolutely, I'm gonna have to go over here. Sorry about that, my mic's not working. Fun balance, thinking about fun balance specifically in our local account. We've talked about fun balance a lot, you know, even though we started the year with eight million in our fun balance, and that our auditors expect us to maintain fun balance. But there are times that we have to bring that fun balance into our budget. And that's what we're doing this year a lot, is using some of that fun balance in our budget. What this bill is proposing is that revenue, because that's what is considered revenue at that point, that fun balance comes in, and that is expected to be divvied out to the charter schools, just like the local appropriations we get from the county. The issue with that is that fun balance has already been accounted for in terms of charter school usage. When we get the local appropriation, it's all divvied out between, with the per pupil allotment, it goes to the appropriate place. If the district and the savings that happens doesn't use some of that, it goes into fun balance. So it's Graham County Schools District Funds that then, if we brought that back into our budget, the bill is suggesting that that money would need to be divided among the charter schools again. So it's really kind of double dipping in a way.
Tell me if this analogy is correct, because that's just the type of person that's... So when you get a paycheck, you pay, let's say, 20% of it in taxes, and let's leave for the rest in your state's account. So then, if this would be akin to saying every year that your money's sitting in your savings account, you take another 20% of what's in the savings account, even though you already paid taxes from the start. So there...
I've said all along that we have some crisis over there. But anyway, let me move on. The idea of that, from what I can understand from some of these ideas, that they're asking for money for programs that they don't have. And I think JROTC is one of the programs that they've mentioned, and that's federal money as far as I can, that took some of it away.
And that's part of the question that comes up with this bill, is the wording is specific, but it's non-specific at the same time. It does talk about that it would not look at federal funds that had a designated purpose. And Ms. Stupson and I were discussing beforehand, that seems like R O T C would fall into that category.
Might be, yes, but I can give you some examples of some funds that would be affected. So pre-K is not federal rate of state, and is a per pupil amount. You get a certain allotment from the state for each pre-K student. And I don't think anyone's ever suggested that it's too much per student. But, and if a charter school has a pre-K, they could also get that per pupil amount from the state directly, if that doesn't flow through the public district. But what this would say is of every dollar you give for a pre-K student, you would have to give out, was it in Graham, about 30%? 30% of that to your charter schools, but when they get pre-K money, they don't have to share with you. So, and they don't have to use what you give them for pre-K. They can use it for fun parties if they want to. So it doesn't make a lot of sense. The other category that we talked about was Medicaid reimbursement. So when your speech therapist provides certain services, some of those get billed in Medicaid. And right now, they go to the restricted fund. But what this essentially does is say that all has to go into local current expense. And so our speech therapist provided an hour service, they billed Medicaid, I also pay $40. 30% of that has to be distributed to charter schools, you know, if our speech therapist provided the service right that we paid. So, and it's hard to know how that accounting would even work, but those are some of the funds that can be impacted. The other one that's an issue there is indirect costs, our federal indirect costs. For all of our federal programs, including child nutrition, we are permitted to take a percentage for administrative costs that the district has for managing the programs and for housing the programs. And indirect cost is on that list of items. The interesting thing is that charter schools have the opportunity to apply for federal programs themselves. So not exactly sure what the purpose of that is.
What about the capital outlay provision in this bill?
That would be quite devastating, because we know very well that our county does not have the funds to provide capital outlay for the buildings that we have. The issue, the question that it raises in my mind is that the county provides capital outlay funding for us, and tell me if I'm wrong, Ms. Stupson. Because they own our buildings, but going to charter schools, they won't own the buildings, but they would be providing capital funds for those buildings.
Well, it depends. The county owns some of your buildings if they have debt secured by the government. So if they're borrowing to renovate a school, we may give them ownership of the school because they use it as collateral for the mortgage essentially. Once that's cleared, generally they transfer it back. But if the school system were ever to sell a school, we'd have to offer it to the county first. Whereas we're at a charter school building, I presume it could, I don't know, but I presume it could just be owned privately if it were not. And I didn't see that as the same requirement that it'd be offered back to the county. Although I will admit I did look as closely as at the capital portion.
Well, does it say you'd have to send your percentage of your capital outlay?
No, what it says is that counties, because currently, counties fund our capital needs and not charter schools. And what it says is counties need to start dividing the capital that they give us and sending it to the charter schools in whatever percentage they want. Is how I understand it.
Even though the capital needs for public schools is, I guess, a billion dollars or more, right now, it goes up there a year because they don't have the funding or money to do it. So this, let me ask you, mention one more thing that, and I read this bill a couple of times in its entirety, and I figured out that it was too crazy to redo it again. So anyway, they have their figures for actual costs, and it talks about for renting and all the things that we do make money on. So if we have a thing happen that they charge money for while we rent it somewhere, then that money parts and that money goes to charter schools. I have been reading on this and trying to figure out, well, I figured out one thing. It was, it would go a long way toward doing in public schools. Because since I've been doing this, we never had enough money to do what we felt like we needed to do, not wanting to do what needed to do. And if this bill passes, we can have a lot less money to do what we need to do. And when I read the sponsors of this bill and saw that our representative had signed on to it, that really was concerning to me. I'm done.
Well, I was gonna ask a question. So there are many charter schools that are profitable. Companies own them, and they are using that money to build charter schools and then to make money. So I guess my question, and what I don't understand, is why then are we having this bill put out? Where obviously, if they're making profit, they can put that money back into the charter schools that they created instead of now asking for more money to make money.
I think that our charter schools are supposed to be on profit, but what they do is then contract with a for-profit management company, and the management companies are the franchise.
Right.
Right.
But either way, the point is...
And it's more profit, yeah.
Right. So, but the point is, is that, like, instead of coming and asking for more money for their buildings and extra things, it's like, I feel like that's supposed to be self-sustainable on its own, right?
The way I see it, people that's in business to make money, wants to make more money. And that's what this is all about, is what I consider. They get a lot of money from us and all our public schools. And even though they seem to be doing very well, you know, one's in Graham County has better buildings than we do. And I suppose that because we pay for them, basically, a lot of them. So I just don't see nothing in this bill that I would vote for, or wanted to have.
So the money that we give to them, of course, students, they can take that money, and that part of that money goes to pay on their mortgage for their building.
Yeah.
Correct.
They can use the funds where they want.
Okay, that's my understanding.
So is this bill putting any more restrictions on them for what they already can do? Or is it just adding more, like, taking away more of our, you know, do you see what I'm saying? Like, is there any part of this, I guess, that's actually, like, putting more restrictions on the charter schools at all?
I am not a charter school professional, but...
It removes a lot of restrictions on charter schools. Yeah, and it actually also contains a new provision, this was not related to the finance, that would allow charter schools to start in microschools within a school, which is... I have a colleague who worked in Arizona where there were a lot of these, is sort of commercially franchised online schools, social service charter schools. And so they would get the same, all the same funds per pupil, but the students may be at home. So that's, you know... Can I share another thought part, good luck for you to have, for a second? And another part is, is that it allows prioritization of, I think it was up to 10%, of their new incoming kindergarteners can be those who have attended and received classes. And what we know about that is that that tends to put them, you know, they have a classroom experience, so they have a little bit more kinship awareness. Still consider that a risk, probably.
The way I read that, they had to have an agreement with the school, and as long as they had an agreement, they could go up to 10%. That's quite impactful.
Madam Chair, as we're in this board, I'd like to make a motion that we approach this through whatever means we can do, possibly a resolutions to our representative especially, but to the general assembly in general, that we oppose this bill as a board. Now, unless someone has some objections that think charter schools ought to take this over.
Can we have discussion? Do you want to say? So thinking about how we could possibly lobby through our legislators, you know, I was listening to all the objections and all the discussion, and it got me thinking about the joint meeting that we are gonna hopefully set in the very near future with the county commissioners. And, you know, I know that they all love our public school system deeply, and maybe, maybe the end of the meeting, we can talk about dates. But I thought this might be a good opportunity to work with them, because, you know, our money sort of travels through them, you know, to go to the charter schools. So wouldn't it be nice if we could all come together to come to an agreement on how we could all lobby on half of our public school system here in Graham County?
So like a joint resolution?
Or, yes, yes.
That was my thinking, that we could ask them to join us in this joint resolution.
How much stronger? Right, how much stronger would it be if it came from all of us, you know?
Do we know what the timing of this bill is as far as how it's gonna move, how frequently?
I do not. It was referred to the Rules Committee, and that was where it stayed for about three weeks.
And they have about 73 bills right now, so hopefully it's way more than...
But I would suggest that we do a resolution and ask the commissioners to sign on to it, to admit this. Because I don't want to wait for them to decide whether they're going to, I mean, it'd be shameful if they haven't talked it, decided or not.
Well, we just need to, I guess, to give a little input. I agree that we need to do a resolution. I don't want us to, and I agree that we do need to address this with the county commissioners. Now, we can definitely have a resolution, stand by, then have that discussion, so that, you know, they feel we didn't leave them out. And as we all know, and we talked about it at the last session, you know, the additional funding that we asked for, you know, for the upcoming budget year. So we know that all of these things that's happening in this bill here is just taking us further and further down with regards to having a budget for, and, you know, keeping funds for our children. And I just, and the other thing that someone mentioned, I really think that it's, needs to be addressed as to the funds that are going to the charter, but they have no restrictions. That is just amazing. And then we were just saying that if they get these funds, there's no restrictions. So why do, you know, it's, this just, when you look at it, it's just not fair for them to have no restrictions with getting funds, and we have to give them funds, they have no restrictions. They can, this bill is for to give them funds, again, no restrictions, and just, something seems a little bit off.
I think, yeah, I totally agree. I think doing something with the county commissioners is beneficial, for sure. I think doing it, having, doing our best to get a meeting with them in person is the best way to go, because I feel like if we can actually talk to them in person, instead of just sending them a piece of paper with, here's what we think, I think that's gonna go a heck of a lot farther than if we just send a piece of paper and say, hey, sign it or no.
Yeah, not that we can't go ahead and pull that resolution together, but definitely in that session, it's not just sign this and like, hey, here's what, you know, really think this is the way to go. And work, yeah.
So, do I need to restate my motion? Because the only thing I would want is that it would be to yours to include the, ask the county commissioners to be a part of the common resolution just for the board to approve the resolution, this group in this bill 219. And we, as a board, we can do that, but we need to ask the commissioners to join us.
So, so it's like an endorsement of them, of our resolution?
Yes.
So, so I think that can't be a one motion, a motion to oppose that the board opposed the bill, and the board requests the county commissioners to join us in that position. Is that okay?
I'll make that motion. Can I give a second?
Give a second? Any more discussion? No, it's been made by Mr. Peace to the board to your resolution, and then ask the county commissioners to join us in that resolution. It's seconded by Ms. Hayes, so we will take the vote, I'll be favoring, Sagana.
Aye.
As have it. Thank you. And I think we all probably, there are several bills sitting over there that we probably need to follow that can affect us, but I think this one is the one that stands out for right now. Next on our agenda is item 3, 402, Data Manager Structure.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Winport, for your share. Mr. Perry is recruiting, so he senses requests this evening. Dr. Winport has gone home to county up event. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Plant, and good afternoon again, everyone. Here just to share some brief updates about some changes that are gonna be made regarding the staffing for our data manager positions. Thanks a lot, please, Mr. Plant. Just to give you a little overview, the data manager position is a classified position. Basically, these individuals are responsible for overseeing student staff data in PowerSchool. This includes a lot of different topics, but primarily, of course, it's attendance, enrollment, demographics, grades, and schedules. There are, of course, many other components, a lot of them are behind the scenes that these staff work on on a daily basis. There are a large number of reports that are required to be available at the state and sometimes federal levels that flows from our data system. So very, very important role in our district. Historically speaking, this has been a school-based role. There is traditionally, I'm thinking back, you know, past couple of decades, there's been an individual at each school that is responsible for the management of student data. This is supervised by the principal, and it's typically led at the district level by a coordinator who oversees and manages the program. And throughout the years, we've had... And throughout the years, we've had a lot of different program types, you know, before Power School was NC wise, before that it was TENS. And going way, way back, it was a complicated sort of hodgepodge of paper-based systems. So, um, but we've always had something like that in place in order to track of what we're doing. And in most cases, this has been a full-time standalone role in our schools, although sometimes in our smaller schools, it could be someone that has blue responsibilities, maybe a data manager, and/or a secretary, or a clerical person, and/or bookkeeper. Okay, next slide. More recently, actually going back to, you know, mid 2000 aughts or so, we began working on the possibility of creating data centers. This is something that's done in some larger school districts in particular, but, um, several administrations before Dr. Wing, they began thinking about this, and really, two of them were established at one year, the Mary Quatter Center for Education, when this, uh, school merged with Northern Granville, and then another one was created down in Mount Energy Elementary School. Again, these centers were created just about five years ago, but I just wanted to make note that there was a lot of conversation about this leading up to it, a lot of consideration. Four staff members were assigned to six schools, and these individuals were non-school-based, so they answered to the district coordinator. The idea being that they would be able to handle a larger number of students, be more efficient in their work, and be able to handle it, um, from a central location. Again, this would also serve as a registration center for parents, a single stop, so again, one in the north, one in the south. And then we had, this left six schools with no data manager in the building. So if a principal or a staff member in the building needed information, they would have to reach out, uh, by phone or virtually to get that, those tasks. Next slide. So, um, we, we had been hearing along the way, um, some concerns about the situation. I know that for many principals, it was difficult having a staff outside of their building that did that work. It simply was not very convenient for the principal and many of the staff. And additionally, if parents came to that school to register, they would need to be sent somewhere else to enroll the child. They would have to go to one of these data centers. Sometimes that was not convenient. And then we also began to hear from our data managers themselves about some of the imbalances that were occurring with their workload. So we are going to move forward next year with a change. We're going to go back to the tried and true, proven method of having a data manager in each school. We're going to be closing our two data centers. That, actually, we would need to relocate the one down at Mount Energy anyway, they occupy two classrooms down there that are going to be full of children next year, so we need those spaces. And we're thinking of moving those staff through a transfer process to a base school. We have a number of retirements among these, among these folks, due to the ranks of our data managers. And, um, so we've got, I believe, four vacancies I think we're going to be facing at the end of this school year that need to be filled. So fortunately, these individuals will have some choice, um, they'll be able to express their preferences and where they'd like to go. Be working with them on that. Mr. Perry and I met with these data managers last Thursday, Dr. Wing was able to jump on the call as well. We explained to them this process, and by and large, they feel, they feel pretty good about it. They had some personal concerns about, you know, individually what kind of impact that's going to have on them, but ultimately, I think they understood the benefit that we provide our schools and our families. So, just so you know, we are going to have, currently, we have fifteen school-based staff, right, and one district data manager, so sixteen, fifteen plus one, sixteen total. Next year, even though we're going from seventeen sites to sixteen sites, we will have seventeen staffs. So it will mean the increase of one ten-month classified position, but we feel that that small expense will be offset by the benefits to our schools. Also, we plan on, um, putting at the district level, uh, data manager position under the technology team. Currently, that person is on my team, Ms. Lori Ward. She happens to be one of the retirements, she's announced her retirement at the end of June, so that, that position has been posted. So that new person will work with Mr. Connor and his team, because increasingly, we're seeing how the data manager position integrates so much with what we do in his department. It's also something that's commonly done in other districts across the state. So I know we've spoken about this, and Mr. Connor is embracing this idea. Next slide. That's it. So I'm happy to take any questions. I know I've answered this pretty quickly, but it's really just your information. We've kind of got everything in motion, and they're excited about it, and I hope to have everything ready for the big turnover with Power School on July one.
Yes, a very interesting briefing. I just met someone today at another school outside of Granville that used to be a data manager here, and she was saying, I think I remember you, and, and it was interesting that now we have this topic here. So my question is, when you had the data managers, and she said she was at the district level, when you had the data manager there, they were the coordinator with all the other, the four schools, she said, that did have them. So them now, data man, well, you're saying that you're going to leave them under the technology, how will the data managers at the schools, you know, connect? How is that going to work? And so does someone have a big picture of all of them?
That's a great question. So we have one district-level data manager, and that's the coordinator of the program. That person is responsible for getting all the updates from NC DPI, you know, the new reports, the new requirements, and then they train each of the school-based staff together in a group. And they're already doing this now, this board meets with them probably every two weeks. They have regular meetings, and they get updated on the latest and greatest Power School bells and whistles that come down. So they will still continue to be trained and coordinated by a district-level position, but they'll be supervised by the principal in their school. One thing that's important, principals have shared, when these folks are in the school building, they're also available to assist with all the other things that just happen at the speed of school. You know, if, if the secretary is out that day, the data manager should come help cover the phones. You know, if there's a crisis and you've got a couple of sick kids, you know, they can pitch in and make phone calls and, you know, help children, that type of thing. You know, just all of the things that happen during your regular school day, that's another body in your front office to assist, which is, you know, very important.
Right, right.
So when you were in these data centers, they were simply only doing their work.
Right.
Isolated from our schools.
Right. So this consolidation of data coming in from each site to the district, you know, can get the big picture there of, you know, things at the schools and some things that might be, need to be more coordinated and improved and things, you know, I'm just saying, yeah, that consolidated effort gets you.
Yes, ma'am. Power School is really nice in that you can provide lots of different levels of access. So, you know, our principals and the data manager in an individual school are only really able to see the information for their children.
Right.
But, you know, the district coordinator manages it for all schools, and they also provide access to people like me, because I, for example, I can log in and I can see data for all schools. I can't go in and change things, you know, but I can, I can view the information.
Right.
Good questions. Well, again, this is just your information? If, I'm sorry, good question?
So if the goal is to put a data manager at every school, um, I just have an concern about the difference in the amount of work expected, because, I mean, we have a vast difference in student populations from high school to some of our smallest elementary schools. So if one person can cover 750 students at a high school, what is the expectation for the person that's posted at a smaller school that say only has like 200 students?
I'm very glad you asked that question, and I probably didn't hit that clearly enough. The folks in our smaller schools have multiple roles. So for example, at Fulton Elementary School, the data manager there is also the receptions. Here at Granville.
Like full-time, sorry?
Uh, yeah, they, they have, one person does two jobs.
Okay, okay.
For example, here at Granville Academy, it's been the data manager, plus the bookkeeper, plus the receptions. Early college, same thing, because in the campus, three jobs. Because it's a smaller school, so, you know, ninety-two-year exact one. And so there are five schools that have people that have multiple roles. The data manager is only part of their job. Phoenix Academy, same thing.
Stove hall.
Stove hall, split wall. Great question. Yeah, because you would not see it even set up there at all.
In every high school, when you talk about high school?
Yeah, in addition, there are different pay scales depending on what grades you run, and our, these employees sometimes are given ten, eleven, or twelve months. All of our high schools are twelve months.
That's right.
Because the, that's a much heavier load, managing all those schedules, two semesters, everything else that's involved.
And if we're going to be possibly creating a position, where does that, right?
Well, I, I think all in all, I, you know, I'm looking over to Vicki, but it's, it's more or less a wash, because we've had so much turnover, um, many of our newer data managers have fewer years of experience, so they're going to pay less. We've also had a lot of vacant, uh, we've had some lapsed salaries from the vacancies that have happened. So being a classified position, ten-month, um, it's not a significant, I'm speaking out of turn here, Vicki, it's not a significant amount for us to look out for.
Right.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Wing.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next on our list is the Holly Middle School update. What we had talked about previously was that this move to Holly, Holly Middle School to the Crete Moore campus is basically a temporary solution to a problem, because it's going to be almost full, and we do expect growth. So we will be using our ball fields, possibly our gym, those kind of things, and we'll still be using the Holly Middle School campus. So the question comes up on how we want to use the system, use the school for the coming year, how we're going to name the Crete Moore facility, and just a couple housekeeping things we really probably need to talk about today. Anybody have any?
I'm full of ideas. I'll express some of them. There has been some talking about, basically from county commissioners, about settling property, which I don't want to do. I feel like, uh, which can use that portion of that property, especially the eighth-grade cafeteria going forward, school purposes. And I'm sure our superintendent could find some great use for that. And also, uh, I felt like we could offer something for the community, use that same facility for something, which would give them an input into it. The, excuse me. I think, I don't know, hearing one or more commissioners talking about settling, I think that is not the, the responsibility or call with it. So we'll go down that road if we need to, but right now, I don't think so. The other thing that I'm going to talk about is the naming of, uh, people I mentioned. And since we are going to continue to use Holly, I would propose naming, just having the Crete Moore School as an annex for Holly, and have it say, you know, annex for DC Middle School. That's what I'd like to see, I'd love the community to be receptive to that.
You can have a policy on naming facilities, it's 9300. There are certainly times when a board may need to just choose a name without going through the policy, and that's fine, but just any wish you need to include a waiver or policy in.
The way you write the policy says, you can't include that person.
Right, among other things, it says that you would not, you will not name your schools after individuals, um, which obviously, sometimes you do, in which case, let's say, I would move to waive policy 9300 and name our school after its person. Is that applicable if we're just, we're moving the school, we're not creating a new school, so does that still apply? So it's really, the policy is really linked to physical facilities, I think you're, so I think you, we can be naming the facility. But again, I think the board can choose, can say, this is not, this is a time when we don't want to use that policy, it doesn't make sense for this situation. I just think the cleanest thing for you to note that you want to waive the policy.
So if we made a motion to do this, then we could have to make the motion be to include the way policy, which, this one?
9300. It specifically, Ms. Hayes, this week to that, it says names for a new school facility or a facility being renamed. So certainly you're not renaming the policy.
We're renaming Crete Moore.
Crete Moore.
I mean, the motion we can move, anybody on that one, you can say about it.
Let me ask this question with regards to that. I understand exactly what we're saying as far as not changing the name Holly, and then, of course, being that Crete Moore actually is, you know, students are going, so possibly making that, making that name then Crete Moore to Holly, but does that mean then that facility down there no longer holds the name of Holly? You know, with that.
I don't see why, I mean, there's not any rule that you can't have the same name, you know, I, I think, I don't see any reason you couldn't rename Crete Moore Elementary to Holly Middle School, and you could refer to the other building as Historic Holly, or Holly Administration, or whatever you want to, you know, so that Crete Moore is just Holly Middle School, the former Crete Moore is just Holly.
Right, right.
Okay. I like the idea of, of keeping the name Holly Middle School with the students and the staff, regardless of which location it's at. Maybe, maybe choosing to name the, the Crete Moore campus Holly Middle School, and then changing the name of the current Holly Middle School campus to something like the Historical Holly Campus or something, and that kind of leaves, leaves it open to whatever we choose to utilize it for, you know, whether it's, I mean, obviously, we're going to have to zip for athletics in the coming year until we figure out what else to do, but I feel like that would kind of leave it open to interpretation.
Could we perhaps name one of them Holly Middle School Annex?
Could use the word annex with a older building that way. Clear that that's not really a secret part.
So at some point, if that field had been more renovated and became the middle school So at some point, if that building more renovated and became the middle school, could just be a sort of a notion, exercise to just change the name of it? And Madam Chair, and just as a point of usage, currently, we have Granville Academy utilizing our Tar River building as our southern site for Granville Academy. With some of the growth and use of even that building, it's getting a bit tight. So one of the things I promised families when we began the Granville Academy was that we would have a northern area site and a southern area site. And I'd like to honor that steal even with this. But what that means is we need to probably move it from Tar River anyway because of how full we're getting in all our southern area remaining elementary schools. So one of the recommendations I'd make would be to move our Granville Academy site to that eight grade wing there at Tar, there at Holly, at Holly Middle School, the current wing. Because we have the cafeteria attached right there and the youngsters, when they're off campus, will have access to that wing, that facility, we could create the office there, so forth and so on. Of course, the draw hall, the pickup, could be at the side. It doesn't need to be at the front of the building where parents need to truck their babes through the school, things of that nature. It would be a side entrance. We need to renovate just a bit the side to do that. And that wouldn't require any additional staff because the staff knows with the kids, what is it, two minutes a week?
I just want to clarify. So in the event that we were to rename Holly Middle, to rename Cretemore Elementary School the Holly Middle School Annex, that does not become synonymous with sporting events and all that. That's just the building, right? It's not like we're renaming the school. Like, we don't have to say, "And welcome to the Holly Middle School Annex."
That's a great question because, of course, the school isn't just the facility. It's what used to have the D P I, the school number, whatever, is Holly Middle School. So for that reason, it might make sense to have the term annex be in the historic building. Again, so that-
Then, is the sports team going to have to be referred to as Holly Annex?
Right. Yeah, the fighting annexes. I think you're a little upset with us about that.
Oh, yeah.
I do like the idea of, if we're going to change that, I do like the idea of putting the Cretemore Elementary as Holly Middle School, saying that. And then possibly adding his, like, the existing, the original Holly site as like Historical Holly Middle School, whatever. You know, I do like that, like adding that historical element because that does just kind of give it a little something, like, because there is history there. We do want to preserve that. And so I just like, yes.
Would it be, you name G C Holly, you mean Middle School?
I don't know, saying Middle School, but I'm just saying, you know, like, it could be, you know, the historic, G C Holly Historical Site or something. Yeah, that would be, yeah.
What about G C Holly Historical Annex?
What is?
For the, for the middle school campus.
Annex, so like, I don't know, sounds like, so-
If it's going to be a historical site, we don't need an annex, do we?
If we, if we do move Granville Academy there, we do want to be mindful of whatever we may make, is where we're sending those babes to go to school. And so we ask ourselves now, what would be prudent to say, what would be appropriate?
And we do need to, like, fusion, just literally sending a package with the other.
Because we're not changing the name of Phoenix Academy, I mean, that Grand Academy, we're not changing the name of Grand Academy.
No, no. So that was just our southern site, which school or location they report to.
Right.
Because right now, we got Tar River, and that's crystal clear. So where are we saying they will go next year?
G C Holly Historical Site.
I think, I think you deal with historical, you have to do the problem with historical. Just sound weird, how about that?
Okay, so let's, let's move on.
Hang on.
People understand the Cretemore Annex, if they're looking at that.
Maybe this is one of the things that we could ask for input. So that people feel like they have a little bit more control, get some feedback. It might be a good opportunity to let some of the advocates for G C Holly to have a voice, maybe? And whether they would like to take the same.
We always get good information now.
Yeah, I would like to give them the opportunity to have their voice heard if they want to add anything.
I, I agree with you. You know, they have come here quite often, meant to be talked about here.
Without any flairages?
We're only just suggestions, right? Are we, I mean, who knows, maybe somebody will come up with something brilliant that we have any good button, so.
That's what I'm afraid of. Need to be approved, you know?
Well, we need to remember too, that our Holly Middle School ball fields will be up there and being used. So I think we definitely need to have a Holly school in there somewhere. And how confusing people.
Yes.
So maybe we could get a Qualtrics survey out, just one of those quick ones. And people could submit things and we can write to you at our annual meeting, whatever we get back, if that sound like.
That's no reason.
So do we still need, do we still need a motion for the Cretemore campus to change that name? Or all in agreement, we should just transfer to Holly, G C Holly Middle School?
You can take your action, just maybe that would be, that would be my section.
Motion to change the name of Cretemore Elementary School campus to G C Holly Middle School.
And waive policy.
Waive policy.
Oh, I'm sorry, and waive current policy, ninety-three hundred.
And then should affective, when does the change happen, July first?
Begin the next school year?
Effective when?
August first, August first, August first.
Second motion.
Any more discussion? All of them say aye?
Aye.
That's measured here too maniously.
I think the one thing I would add is on top of the survey, if we wanted to reach out to Reverend Holly's family and see if they have any opinions as well, make sure they get the survey. Because I know one of the family members showed up to that public hearing that was at the school. So I think, you know, they care enough to show up for that, just to, you know, make sure that we take their input for what we're renaming it would be useful as well.
And then right along on our agenda, item thirty-four, Superintendent's Search Conversation. Absolutely. We have some of our friends from the North Carolina School Boards Association with us this evening. And we first, we have Attorney Sam Thorp. Yes, great. We turn it over to you, Sam.
Thank you definitely. And thank you for inviting us to present to you this afternoon, inviting N C S B A to bring us onto your agenda. Very briefly, just to give you some background information about myself and my colleague Caitlin. My name is Sam Thorp. I'm an attorney at the North Carolina School Boards Association, where I currently head up, lead the association's Superintendent's Search Service. I've been at N C S B A for almost six years, it'll be six years next month. And during that time, I've done a lot of legal policy work, as well as Superintendent's Search work in districts all over North Carolina, including some work on your district's last search in two thousand and seventeen. Before I came to N C S B A, I did family law, divorce law for a couple of years in Cretemore, North Carolina. And before that, I was a social worker in Chapelville. I did a lot of work with youth with developmental disabilities, primarily autism, through U S Chapelville's Teach Program. I also worked in an intensive outreach program with youth struggling with substance use disorders, sometimes other core mental health disorders. One of the newest members to our Superintendent's Search team, though not to N C S B A, is Caitlin Autry, who's here with me tonight. She's been at N C S B A for two years, as an attorney, doing mostly, really exclusively, legal and policy work. In fact, I think she just recently started working on a custom policy manual for her school district. But she's very recently transitioned to doing some Superintendent's Search work. That's why she's here with me this afternoon. The reason we're here, very obviously, is because you, your board, is beginning to vote and have conversations about finding a new superintendent. And toward that end, I've brought with me some folders for your board. And these folders have quite a few, of course, sample draft documents that I prepared. The, the draft, there's a number of draft documents, and then there's also a memo that explains each of them. And we refer those draft documents at N C S B A as initial documents, initial search documents. And what they are basically are documents that if we were to decide to use us, to hire us, to facilitate your next search, they're documents that we need you the board to vote on and approve in order to get your search started. But before we look at those, even discuss those, what I think makes the most sense is for me to briefly walk through a PowerPoint presentation. And I'll explain to you in a little bit of detail what our N C S B A Superintendent's Search process looks like. Give you a chance to ask any questions that you have about our search process or about what it might look like specifically if we were to do another search for your board. After that, it's really up to you in terms of what steps you want to take. If you'd like to take a closer look at some of those draft documents and ask some specific questions about them, that's perfectly fine. I'm happy to do that. I'm certainly prepared to do that. But what probably makes the most sense is for you as a board to take some time to consider our proposal, maybe consider other proposals, explore other options, and then follow up with me, either through your board chair, your board vice chair, your board attorney, in terms of whether or not you need any more information, you have some additional questions, or of course, if you decide that you ultimately do want to move forward with us to have us facilitate another search for your board. With that introduction out of the way, I'll now transition to my PowerPoint, which I think I'll let you see. I hope all of you want to see. I'm not sure exactly how, how I'll throw you, I can do it for you. Okay. Okay, we have a team of folks at N C S B A that work on Superintendent's searches, seven folks, four attorneys and three administrative professionals. And our team has a lot of experience in doing searches. We've done at least one search for eighty-two of the state's one hundred and fifteen school districts, including your district, as I've already mentioned. And in total, our team's done close to two hundred, we have completed or are in the process of completing close to two hundred searches. We're actually working on five right now. We're also very active members of a group called M A S, the National Delegation of Superintendent's Searches. It's a, you know, it's a thing of like group of other state school boards associations that do K-12 public school searches, with public school systems in their respective states. And we're always finding ways to improve our process. It's also a way for us to meet really good, strong, out-of-state candidates who you think might be good at the personal systems, where you can search for here in the online. The first step in our process, as you might guess, involves deciding whether or not you even want to do a search. Depending on some board's circumstances, their situation, they have an internal candidate that they know that they're going to hire, or they know they're very likely going to hire. And in those situations, for pretty obvious reasons, it doesn't always make sense spending the time and money involved in doing a search. If that is not the case with you, and you decide that you do want to do a search with us, first step in our process, as I've already mentioned, involves getting you the board to vote on and approve a number of initial documents, initial search documents. And the first of those is a draft timeline, which basically includes target dates for all of these significant steps in your search process. And I've provided you the sample copy of a timeline. One really important thing to keep in mind about the timeline is that the only hard date women fix the date in the timeline is the application deadline. For pretty obvious reasons, we just have to set a date and time certain when the applications have to be submitted. All of the other dates are flexible, though we wouldn't want to, want to stay as close to it as possible in order to arrive on, or maybe even arrive early at that projected employment, starting employment date for the new superintendent. The next initial document is a vacancy announcement, which basically includes some general information about your school system, your community, and the types of things, characteristics, traits that you're looking for in a new superintendent. It also explains to applicants how to apply for the vacancy and who to contact with any questions. The application, the sample application that I've provided with you would have, has mostly generic types of questions in terms of work experience, education experience, licensure, et cetera. There are two pages in the application, pages nine and ten, that have long, short-ended essay questions. And we would, of course, work with you to make sure that the application asks questions, presented issues, and that you wanted it to address as part of the application process. When it comes to advertising, there are a whole slew of free places that we always advertise. There are also a number of paid places that we offer, sort of as a menu of options in terms of what you would, where do you want to advertise the position? We would defer to you completely in terms of, well, number one, whether or not you want to spend any money for advertising, and number two, where you want to spend that money. As a general rule, we do not recruit candidates unless either, number one, you, the board, ask us to go specifically target a certain person or certain persons. Or if we happen to know that someone is looking. And of course, because of the search work that we do, we do happen to know of folks that are looking. And sometimes if we think they're the right fit, we might go target or recruit that specifically. Step three of our process is entirely optional, but it's one we're happy to facilitate for you if you're interested. It involves getting feedback input from your staff and your community. And we found that the best way to do this is through online surveys that your staff and community can sort of fill out in their time anonymously in the privacy of their own home. And we would handle all the logistics of setting up that survey and getting it out to the community as well as to the staff with the help of your Public Information Officer. And then we would collect, organize, prepare all of the survey results, and then present those to you at a regularly scheduled board meeting. Once we present those results, we would then facilitate a discussion with you, board, wherein you would share, or have the chance to share, the opportunity to share with the staff and the public, what sorts of things are most important to you, characteristics, traits, experience are most important to you in a new superintendent, as informed by the feedback that you now have a chance to review via the online surveys from your staff. Based on the list of traits, items that's generated during that discussion, we create what we call a leadership profile and a custom candidate briefing chart, both of which boards find really helpful when they're reviewing applications, deciding who to interview, interviewing applicants, and then push deciding who the district's new superintendent is going to be. Again, optional step, but one we're happy to facilitate for you in the process. Once the application has closed, we would organize all of those application materials and share them with you via a, it's a secure online platform that we use called Simly. and share them with you via a, it's a secure online platform that we use called Symbly. Each of you would have a unique login ID and password for accessing the application materials, as well as any other materials that we would share with you throughout the rest of the search process. Two reasons that we use Symbly. One is applicants to your, and you probably already know this, but applicants to your school system are entitled to confidentiality under North Carolina law. And we found that the best way to sort of maintain that confidentiality is by using Symbly. Also, the application materials just involve a lot of paper. And really, at this point on, there's a ton of paper in terms of the application materials, various background checking. And so we found that the most cost-effective, efficient way to share all of the materials would be this electronic way on Symbly. One other thing we do as part of this step is we create an experience chart. It's basically a chart that clearly and concisely summarizes the relevant work experience of your applicant pool. And boards find the chart really helpful in sort of orienting them, guiding them through the application review process. We would post all that in Symbly, give you plenty of time to review it, and then I would come and meet with you at a special call beginning close session to discuss the application materials and sort of facilitate a conversation, wherein you, as a board, would decide who you wanted to conduct an interview, who of those applicants you'd like to sit down and have an in-person interview with. One point I want to make really clear about this step in our process, and it's really true of our entire process, and that's that at no point is NCSBA, any work from NCSBA, going to screen in or screen out an applicant, tell you which application or resume to look at, who to interview, who to hire. Two reasons for this. One is North Carolina law makes it very, very clear that it's locally elected boards of education alone who decide what superintendents are going to be. We do not interfere with that. We don't get in the way of that. Secondly, and this is more of a practical thing, and in my experience, one of the biggest things, one of the most significant things that boards are assessing when they're doing a search is fit, that sort of intangible, causus subjective element of how is this candidate going to fit with us as a board, going to fit with our central office, fit with the parents, students, the community. And in our experience, it's locally elected boards of education who are best suited and really only suited to assess that piece. And so we give you as much information as possible, as good an information as possible, and help you process it and analyze it. But when it comes to deciding who to interview and who to hire, that really and truly is going to be up to you as a board to decide. I just want to make that really clear, especially as you're still thinking about whether or not you want to do the search and who you want to do it with. Once you've decided who you'd like to interview, we would go and do internet and social media searches, and we would pull relevant achievement data test scores, to the extent those are available and relevant to your first round interviewees. And we would share all of that with you on Symbly well enough in advance of your sit-down interviews, so that you could craft a question of it if you wanted to, factor it into your interview, or just, you know, take it into account prior to your interviews. Our team will handle all of the logistics, setting up the interviews. We would also create customized interview notebooks, customized interview questions. We'd also include schedules and rating charts for each of you. And then I will come in person to facilitate those first round interviews. There was a period of time where we were doing everything virtually, but that has come and gone thankfully. And so I would be there to help you get in and out of closed session, to keep the minutes, since it's a special call meeting, and it's obviously confidential, and people are going to be there. And we would handle any, we would get the candidates in and out as confidentially as possible, and also handle any issues that come up. We don't sit in on the interviews for some of the reasons I've just mentioned, we don't screen candidates. But we are there to help facilitate the interviews. And then, of course, at the end of the interviews, we would meet again in close session with you to facilitate a discussion where most boards at that point are ready to narrow their first round interviewees to a list of finalists, two, three, sometimes even four finalists. If you're ready to make that decision, if you do identify your finalists, we then go and over a period of two or three weeks, we generate very thorough due diligence reports on each of them. So we would update the already existing intermittent social media search. We would do a criminal credit and degree verification check. We would get very detailed references going back to at least five years. We would also get copies of any past evaluations going back to at least five years, copies of current contracts, and a very detailed breakdown of the salary and benefit information. Basically, what we want to do is make it most boards at the end of that second round of interviews are ready to make an offer. They've identified which of their finalists is their top choice, and they're ready to make an offer and begin negotiating a contract. And so we want you to have all the information that you need, so that if you are ready to talk to your board attorney about making an offer, you've got all the information and you're ready to do that. And of course, we share that information with you prior to your sit-down interviews, if you had a chance to consider it. We've also had a chance to factor it into your interview questions, to be essential to doing that. We would handle all of the logistics of setting up that second round and final round, so to speak, of interviews. I would come in person to facilitate them, just like the first round. And then at the end of that, like I've already said, most boards during that discussion after that second round of interviews are usually ready to make an offer and have a top choice that they'd like to make an offer to. If you are in that boat, I would hand it the ton off to your board attorney, who would advise you on what to offer and sort of how to negotiate that contract with your selected finalists. We're there to support you in getting that process, and same is true for the selected finalists. But when it comes to actually negotiating the contract, that really is exclusively between you, your board attorney, and the candidate, his or her, and they almost always do hire an attorney. Last step in our process involves finalizing the minutes. We will be keeping the minutes at all in the special call meetings. There's usually at least a three. We would finalize those, share them with you and your board clerk in appropriate time. We would also help draft a form of press release with the help of the selected finalists, including their work experience, education experience, a photo, quote, family information, to the extent we want to share that. And we would get that to you, so that you would have it again well enough in advance of when you would announce and appoint that new superintendent. We have a lot of experience and expertise. We hold ourselves to a very high standard. This slide, on the right side, are all the searches that we recently completed over the past couple of years, left side are the searches that we're currently working on. Our expertise is kind of twofold. We have a lot of expertise in the HR administrative aspect of doing searches, and there is a lot of that to doing these searches. We also have a lot of expertise in dealing with some of the legal issues that sometimes come up, not all the time, but sometimes come up during searches. And we feel like that twofold experience serves us really well in facilitating searches for votes of education in North Carolina. And we hold ourselves to a high standard. I'm sure you've heard this before, but really and truly the most important decision to make, one of the most important decisions to make, I would argue, the most important decision your superintendent is going to make. And you deserve, in short, a very professional and excellent process. We would, of course, strive to provide you with that if you were to use us to facilitate a research for your board. Those are all my slides. I'm happy to answer the questions that you have. Shoot with your business.
Would you say that generally speaking, that the process takes approximately three months, two to three months?
It used, it used to take six months or more, and that's partially because of how long we advertised, and sometimes how long to schedule interviews and to do the background checking. We've gotten it to where, and I can't make any promises on how long it's going to take, because every school system's different and their search is different, but we've gotten to where we can do it in about four months. Or in about four months, you can know who you're going to hire and be negotiating the contract. As far as whether or not they can start, there's usually at least sixty days, sometimes even ninety, before certainly a city superintendent or assistant superintendent can start.
Could you speak to interim superintendents as well?
Sure. So we, for all of our member boards, at no charge, work with boards to help find interims. And we have a list, a bank related folder, actually, of resumes that former, mostly former superintendents have shared their resumes with us and said that they would be open to serving, depending on whether or not it's the right fit, it'd be open to serving as an interim in a North Carolina school district. And what we typically do when boards are looking for an interim is we identify some folks in that, on that list, that we think could be a good fit. Sometimes you have names already, board members already have names that they're interested in. And then we go and get, generate as many folks as we can, a list of as many folks as we can who would be interested in serving as an interim, and then share that list with you. Of course, we could help set up interviews if you're interested in doing that. You're in a little bit of a unique spot in that Dr. McLean's around until the end of June. Is that, is that right? But that is a hard out, aren't you, in third? Is that correct? Yeah. So I do think-
Say there's a hog down?
Yes, sir.
So I assume this is why your board attorney brought this up, is if you look at the timeline that I proposed, I think best case scenario, and this is if you were to make a decision in the next couple of weeks, and you were to use us, a projected start date in roughly in August. And so, and that's if everything went exactly how the timeline was written, and that never happens. So I'm not saying you're way off of that, but I've never had a timeline run exactly of course. So I do think you would, as a board, be trying to figure out, assuming you're doing the search and you're in the midst of the search, Dr. McLean steps down, as she's going to do, you would need to have a discussion of whether or not it was someone internally you were interested in having serve as an interim, which is certainly an option, or whether or not you wanted us to help you find outside, external interim candidate. But I do think that's something, a piece that you would have to do in concert with your superintendent search. It's not unique to you. There are several other boards that are working with right now who are anticipating having to do the same thing.
So I'm curious, mixed on the timeline, and you're saying going through an interim search. If that were what we were just to decide to do, for all intents and purposes, I mean, we could theoretically bypass the interim process if we have until June 30th, and it takes approximately just under six months. Is that accurate?
Six months for-
For the, for a permanent superintendent versus an interim. Because, so I guess I'm trying to understand. So you're saying, okay, if we were to hire an interim, but if Dr. McLean is here until June 30th, then when, when is the interim's term to occur?
So the interim, you would probably need to start thinking about an interim. My suggestion would be to start thinking about it in May.
So would they be, would the interim would be from 2023, '24 school year, and then like our, like whoever we were to hire after that would be for the '24, '25 school year? Is that what you're telling me, or is that-
I think you're, I think the interim would be in place for six to eight weeks. I think approximately two months.
So is that short? Because it just seems like a lot of upheaval for a short, a short period of time to have people get used to.
People have to have it.
I know, but I'm just saying, like, it just seems like to have, like, it seems like an awful lot of upheaval for people to get used to the loss for six to eight weeks and then to move on to somebody else.
It is, but the likelihood that you'll have permanent hire by July 1st is low. It's not impossible, but it's low, and by law, you've got to have someone in that seat. So, I mean, you could appoint internally. You don't have to go through a whole elaborate process.
But that's what I was just trying to understand, is like, is this like a huge, like, two, are we talking like a two-year process, or are we talking like, okay?
Yeah, so an interim, if it's a retiree, you know, there's, you'll look at, you might interview two or three, but you, there are known quantity, you know, there are retirees who go through this, and it would be a short-term contract, just like essentially until you find someone.
Right.
We want to make this not, not complicated.
Right.
And I would think that, I mean, that's possible, that you might have a superintendent by the time this superintendent leaves. But if not, you're feeling real sad over that. I suppose you make some decisions about this two weeks from now when you have a label fee.
Right. So my other question then is, I mean, how many applicants do you usually see?
So ever since really the beginning of the pandemic, so early January, February 2020, we've seen much smaller pools. And it's not just during North Carolina, it's all across the country. But whereas we used to see probably low to mid twenties or lower of applicants, to all the way up to sometimes even the forties, the low to mid forties we would see. Now we're seeing more low to mid teens and low, low to mid twenties in that range. I honestly can't promise you how many applicants you'll have. And I do think that, I do think those school districts have been very pleased with who they've ultimately landed on, but the pools are smaller. And in addition to being smaller, you're also having either no or less city superintendents, so folks who are currently superintendent in another district, whether it's here in North Carolina or other state. Or if you do have a city superintendent, sometimes they have less experience, city superintendent experience than historically we can see in sort of prior to the pandemic. And really, that hasn't, there's been a slight uptick, Richmond only had twenty-four applicants for its loophole, which was actually a lot. But by and large, that would be on top of it, that we're seeing currently.
And so I guess then, my other question then, I guess, is, because that was kind of compared with, there's a teacher shortage, obviously, then that also equates to superintendent shortage as well, or is that? I mean, like, I guess, you know, like, we're, because we're dealing with, oh, there's like such a teacher shortage, and I just didn't know if that was like correlating from, you know, at all levels of-
Yeah, I want a number of different alerts, Google alerts, there's all kinds of different speculation about why the pools are so low, not just for the teachers, bus drivers, but also for superintendents. I think it's the number of different things.
And so you said that Richmond had a higher number of applicants?
I think, I was positively surprised with the volume of applicants, just given the size of their system, the size of location of their system. I think they were from, over the number of applicants. We've just seen as low as twelve interns.
And I guess my question then is, like, how does that correlate, like, to district size? Because like, our district is obviously going to be much smaller than Wade or Chapel Hill, and like the amount of candidates that they are, they're pulling in, so.
Stuff and location are two of the top sort of things that candidates are looking at, as you might expect, given the number of data, the number of data. And so I, I, in my opinion, I think this would be a really good job. This is a really good location. This is somewhere you have really, really well-regarded, very well-regarded, highly-regarded city superintendent. And I would expect you to have a very strong after the pool. I do not think it's going to be a large number of applicants, I could be wrong about that, but I think you would be very pleased. I really do think you would be very pleased with your applicant pool. Every board has been, and certainly in systems that are much more remote and much smaller and are now under the circumstances they generate, which is a really strong, long-serving, it might be a long-serving, city superintendent stepping down because they're ready to retire as opposed to some other circumstances that we're sure to see in other districts.
Okay, Sam, thanks for the presentation. Quick question, the four to six week period for the stakeholder input, does that change your guys' fees at all, is it the same regardless? It's, it's the same regardless? Thanks.
So I, so I've given you a cost estimate in your, in your folders. There's a, there's a-
I can't even tell who's in there.
There's a flat fee of twenty-one-five, you're correct, I can. And then after that, it's just expenses. And the way our, our sample agreement's written up is you, as a board, would get to vote and decide any additional expenses above that. The two biggest expenses, one of which most boards are not covering right now, are any sort of travel expenses for their finalists. Most boards have stopped doing, stopped doing that at the beginning of the pandemic and haven't started back. That's not in all cases, but that is by and large common practice. That's not in all cases, but that is by and large common practice. Another big expense are the background checks. Those are, we, we contracted a third-party paid review minutes to help with the criminal credit and the degree verification. And their prices have gone to 650 dollars. They do a great job. It's a wonderful service, but that's just a significant, that's a substantial expense. All of the other things are things like our travel, to the extent we make copies or something like that. As a frame of reference, the Richmond search and the Hartford search, the two of our most recent, were right around $23,000. We worked really hard to keep our expenses as low as possible. They had a little bit of overlap in terms of prior searches and already having some background checking information on some of their clients, so they were able to save a little bit of money on that. We can't guarantee whether or not that would happen. That's just to give you an idea. It could be anywhere between 23,000 and 25,000 dollars. Any other questions I can consider? Well, my, thank you again for having us. I really do appreciate it. And my contact information email or phone number, if you want us to call, text, email, and everything that's comfortable with, with any questions that you have. And as I already mentioned, we also, regardless of whether or not you decide to hire, which we more than happy to help you find an interim, if that's something that you need some help with.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Really appreciate you taking the time to come over here and do that for us.
Thank you very much.
I suspect what we need to do is promptly all of this read through all the material, and we will schedule this for discussion and making some decisions in our next quarterly, uh, in October. Right. Thank you. You did real well with your presentation today.
As a question-
Next, over there.
Quick question.
Sure.
Now, we've got to be reading through this material and everything, and if we in fact have some additional questions, and we're not going to have them, and then I don't, and you said something about it the next, did you say working session or-
No, the next morning.
And would that be something we discuss on the table that's so in the air at this point? I mean, you know what I'm saying? I'm going to read through this, and I definitely may have some questions, but, okay, let me put it this way. What do you think we're going to cover with regards to this at the next session? You know, I'm just trying to see what steps and where, because I don't want to just jump into this. It's a lot.
My thinking is what we would be doing would be deciding if this is a route we want to go with the North Carolina School Board Association. I don't think we'll get to that point on what we're looking for in that type of thing.
Okay, so just, this is the route?
I think we will be just looking at if we want to use them or if we want to try to contact other search firms.
Okay.
Actually, one other question that I'll probably have is whether you want to serve inside and outside of the system. Because a lot of times, maybe within the system that apply, now that we knew that, you know, that I'll be given an opportunity to do that.
So you're saying that if we use them, we would, anybody inside the system would just apply through that process as well? Correct?
Not necessarily. Say, all right, somebody within the system apply that's, we know, don't have to do all the stuff that they do. You save yourself 25,000 dollars.
We can discuss that too.
Are you, wait, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to make sure. I'm saying, are you saying that you want to open it up to like internal applications before we make a decision if we're going to use them?
No.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
We're saying if we, we need to decide whether we want to use inside people and outside, if you're going to have people advertised, whether you would do them or not, we need to decide whether we want, people within the system that might even apply have the opportunity to do. That's all.
Okay, so I think it's not that refreshing, is, do you feel the need to hear from other search firms? Or you come across when you use a lot of time? And obviously, just from the end of the period, if anything, you have also, also, I don't know, but, but there are two or three others that you know, five or four others that you've got to consider.
That costs a lot more.
So if, if there was a strong interest in hiring from others, you might bring that up today, because then your chair by chair can arrange for that, to get materials from them for the next meeting, just so you can move it forward. Otherwise, we can bring the school association contract on the agenda. And so that potentially would probably be the decision point, is, is to sign a contract with them. You would put that as a question, you know, as a decision to make. And there may, there will need to be special meetings, if there's a long process, to move it forward. You may also at some point decide one of the smaller committee to do some of the initial review, just to, again, keep things to the record.
As a random question, you guys know who have experience with this, when, I, for me, in my opinion, is that it's either we get an internal hire or an act, or we can find somebody that is interested or use them. I mean, I have no interest in looking for a private firm, but with experience with them, does anybody know when their fee comes out? Because frankly, the, the two period of time between now and when we're communicating about having the conversation about hiring them, that's a lot of, I mean, that's not a lot of time for people to make an internal decision or something like that about whether or not they want to, you know, whether they're happening or something. So it's a hypothetical scenario, like if it takes a month for an internal or six weeks for an internal to express that interest and make that decision and all that kind of stuff, we can't stop, we can't put the process on hold for a four to six week period of time. But if we, in the meantime, contract with them, does anybody know of that, when that fee comes out? Because if it's a portion or if it's a promissory note or something like that, and then we have a good candidate that shows up, is there eligibility for us to like break that contract or say, hey, we don't need this now without losing that 25 grand or something like that? Do you guys know what I'm talking about with the timeline?
Yes, yeah, we can ask them that, like, would we cancel? Or how, yeah, how far along could we cancel? I mean, what, what some do is put their internal candidates through the same process, bring the external and the internal forward and forth, you know, just bring them through the same process.
Because I guess, like, I'm assuming that if there's an internal that becomes the front runner or something, and we still put them through the same process, I'm assuming they wouldn't give us any kind of, you know, discount or anything because we provide it.
No, because they're still bringing others. Now, there is, and this is for you to consider sometimes, a public interest in seeing people get that.
I've been three times before that. Well, you know, and, and 32 years is a long time. And we, we've done it for the bad people in general, that we knew were interested, and we wanted to hire them, so we did. And, you know, the times we knew the association, and we interviewed candidates that, that was interested from inside, just like we do for the ones that they, you know, they're in a business here, I mean, y'all need to be in here. And longer than, some, sometimes you might know the one that's already within the system, well, look to know that you want to hire. So if, if that's the case, then I would see spinning a lot of money, you know, to do what they would do. So that's what, that's why I said, you know, applicant should be, the board should consider internal, the captain applicant also. And we, we have the option of when we want to do that, when we want to do before we hire them, you know. But that's our, our call. And we got to, to make a decision.
Now, is this, now, what I'm getting back at is what is going to be put on the agenda for Monday, which is no more than possibly, not Monday, first Monday in April, any more than putting out there to, you know, the public or for they will be streaming or whatever the case might be, where we are at. And this is the approach, we're going to take no decisions. You know what I'm saying? I just want to make sure that it's straightforward. And has there ever been in the past any input from the community?
Oh, yes, that's, that's part of their process, certainly.
Oh, oh, okay. Once you get someone, they do it. Okay.
Yeah, public, public demand.
Yes, okay.
We've had applicants that Jesus Christ with a big foot to be a community manager. I mean, there were some really great people out there.
Okay.
And based on the information you get from the community, you know, there are people out there that thank superintendents a lot, but you-
So what we're saying is at this meeting, our board meeting starting in April, April, we're not going to be at the point to tell the people that's listening anything other than we are still laying out the process to them. Okay.
So, so Mr. Peace, I'm curious, in the past, whenever you have done it, where you've hired, where you haven't gone through a, a company?
Okay.
How did you, how did you do, how, what was the process that you all-
The first thing we asked you. We wanted to come see to it, it was working within the system. Maybe that we had hired somebody as well, that, you know, they have a supply, came to the board and said, I want to do it. We have the application, I mean, you know, you can ask for whatever you want from them, too.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was like, like a formal process that the board went through, what, not using the company?
Well, we think that the board have to decide what the process is.
So we're saying that possibly you could just open it up to a certain amount of time until you're going to be in the system? Or do you have any preparation?
I know the situation where a board member came to meet me at the board room and left that superintendent. I mean, that's how, I mean, that's a pretty, that's a pretty one-spread process, yes.
Like, that's my experience here, yes.
Yeah, but, you know, it happens. So, I mean, I can't say what we're going to do. We can have a conversation about it and, you know, decide how, if we want to.
I think one thing to consider is, even if you have internal candidates, would you want to put this, having it be a source through the whole hiring process or not? I don't think the cost of school association is probably in the stew of what you're talking about, a small, small portion.
I don't think, I mean, I'm, I'm just going to say, like, if there's somebody within the system that, that anybody has in the back of their mind, I would hate to see us spend that kind of money to, to spin the wheels and go through the process only to end up with a set person at the end. You know what I mean? Like, I'm not, I'm not really, like, if nobody has it in the back of their mind, and they've got something, you know, that they want to throw out of their mind, but I, I don't want to see us spend $25,000 when we all know that that could be used elsewhere, just to put them through a process and then end up with that at the end.
I mean, a case scenario that we could run through is that, as far as what Ethel's saying, is that we could have two weeks from now be slated while we're making the decision whether or not we're going to be hiring, just having these guys, the contract, that, like, affirmative or negative, that be what we're voting on next week. And having internal candidates know that they have a two week period of time to potentially have an application where they can maybe bypass a portion of that or something like that, or, or make it so that it never gets to the contract with these guys portioned, where we'd have to do interviews and all that kind of stuff. Like, they'd be getting, I guess, a little bit of specific, like, special privilege or something like that, where they can operate outside of what other candidates would be having to go through or something like that, because they're already in the system, we would know them, all those kinds of things. So we could make it an agenda item that we have this for approval, you know, get entered into this contract, but also have an agenda item or something where people would have the opportunity to apply from internal outside of this.
So, so you're saying like-
It just gives them a timeline, so we're not waiting indefinitely.
Right, so like saying, okay, at next week's meeting, saying we're going to open up for an internal hire. You have two weeks to get your stuff in.
Yeah, or we're going to potentially go over a contract.
And then, yeah, based on what happens, then we would potentially move forward with this on May 1st or whatever.
Something like that, because like the optional portion where we're serving the community, they have slated as like a four to six week period of time. So, I mean, if we don't have to do that, and it's internal, that would save a month, a month and a half or something like that.
That's what I'm saying. When we hired out last superintendent, we had two internal applicants that were good folks. Same process, the superintendent went through really, I mean, that's the best thing to do.
Yeah.
But we decided, I mean, we decided to avoid, that's what we wanted to do. And at the end of that process, neither one of them became superintendents. So we sit down.
So I-
I'm going to be basically talking.
Perfect, so, um, so, I mean, I like the idea of possibly saving money. If we, we don't have to, to use, you know, the state board, or we don't have to contract after that, like, you know, I get that if there's an internal candidate. But I think at the same time, if we decide to go with the state board, it would be important to, to also at the same time vote for a search for interim. Because like you said, we were going to like that, that timeline, we're going to do that. One of my biggest concerns is continuity, because we know our staff, our wonderful staff, do not do well with, with uncertainty. And so I really want them to know that, you know, that they have a boss, and they have somebody to lead, and somebody reliable. And so that's, that's why I think it's concerning, because I think we saw a lot of our staff turnover last year was a result of uncertainty, unfortunately. And so I, you know, I don't want us to face that kind of turnover again in the upcoming school year because of uncertainty. So I don't want to take that into consideration. And then also, I wasn't sure if there was any sort of like statutory requirements for, like, transparency, I guess. This is kind of what I'm, like, I'm not, like, I'm not opposed, of course, if we have some fabulous internal candidates, like, I definitely want to entertain those and, and appoint the best person possible. But I also want it to be like a very transparent process, so.
So what happened, what has to happen in open session is the actual selection. Meaning the contract, approving a contract for someone and whatever's in that, in terms of that contract. The discussion, once you're talking about individual applicants, instead of just the general discussions we're having now, about individual applicants generally coming in close. So there's not, there's not a different, any sort of different requirement for really for hiring superintendents or transparency than there is for hiring other levels? You have to do it in open, that you can discuss before getting close their qualifications and so forth. As far as interim, one thing that sometimes works, if, one thing to think about, and I think maybe what we may need to do is figure out, we may need to have a small closed session, maybe at the beginning of the April meeting, or both the break, you know, or start three minutes early, start a closed session, so that we can talk about some of the confidential personnel aspects of this. But it is, it is certainly possible that you could find an internal candidate for interim. She doesn't want to be permanent, but is willing to serve, you know, and that, that can maintain her continuity. Some boards do say, and it's really commute, but it is difficult for someone to be interim and be in the search process. So sometimes they say, you know, we love an interim, but, but if we want to be interim, we need you to agree that you're not interested in the permanent position, so that, that your, your attention is on the job. And so that, you know, so as far as continuity, have such a candidate who's interested in doing that internally.
So again, maybe we really do need to go ahead and open it up for internal applications then, because what you're saying, again, for continuity, that if we were to, if we were to have some amazing internal applicants or whatever that we can look at seriously and consider, then we would be able to just bypass that whole interim process.
If, yeah, I mean, if you had theoretically, if you had someone in your-
Which would allow for a bigger transfer and be able to, you know, give our staff and our families some, you know, some relief.
Exactly. I think we need to do, one is get- I think we need to do more is if we're going to do a survey of the community, we need to make that decision today and get it out there so that as time, to reach them, we'll have that information back.
Why would you do a survey of the community?
You mean what they're looking for in a superintendent?
Yeah.
Well, so that is part of what the school association does, is they have a survey that they put out there for you and then compile the data. I mean, we could, you know, you don't have to make any decisions today and maybe we will have a close session and maybe we'll end up speaking with Dr. Blumberg in a close session about interim candidates and her thoughts on that, correct, for interim or permanent, does that make, helps me out with that.
I guess another question that I have is, do they have kind of like an all-apart menu at NCSB where you can hire them to do just each of them instead of like all the other things?
Probably, I can, I can explain about that. I think, I think in here they do have, oh, no, I'm sorry. But I would just note again that with the decision of the size, the cost of the search is very small.
If I were, but it's just, and I knew they were looking for a superintendent and I wanted to be one, I would certainly go to the chair of the board and say, look, what's your process? I don't know if, you know, I mean, that's just what I would do as a person, I would tell people out there, I mean, we don't, they not going to wait until a month or two down the road to stay, you know, whereas you have to first work out their application to apply. I mean, you know. Just go out for it.
Yes, I imagine interest will be expressed to Dr. Blumberg, Ms. Williams, and maybe bring that back to us.
And I just want to make sure I understood you correctly. You said that if someone do, that come in as an interim, that's what it is, an interim, that's not coming in, even from the internal side comes in as an interim, then they will not be able to be considered for.
I mean, there's no rule against it, like, you could have someone serve as interim and then elevate them to permanent, if they're not retired, the retirees just can't do it. But that, that just leads to a lot of uncertainty in the process, and maybe you could speak better to why that can be difficult.
Several boards choose that, but I'm trying to do this in time, that's your call as a board, if you want to put that stipulation there. The person in that seat is, they're looking to be right in the district, they're going to be there. And the process itself of applying as a superintendent, especially with their final mystery search, is, it's a process, it's very involved, and for all intents and purposes, you want it to be, this is typically their pinnacle role of one's career in college education, what K-12, anybody, so you want it to be a rooftop process, bringing the creamery process to the top. Thanks, DePoyner. Well, when we'll start off with a close session.
Five, 15, 5:00. We'll start with general stuff. How many people are going to have? More than an hour?
No, not less, I'm saying.
And I think all of us will be thinking about these issues. Carefully, we can kind of decide our direction a little bit next week. Any other comments on this? All right. We've got some upcoming events and announcements. Dr. Blumberg, are you going to be at quarterly meeting in Charlotte?
Yes.
The 23rd, the 23rd through the 24th, educational leadership in Charlotte. Third is for education, regular meeting here at 6, but we are going to start at 5:15, so just note that correction. And then we have a Friday holiday starting April 7th and spring break, so maybe we won't have any meetings during that time. We're trying not to. We are trying to get together sometime next week, a policy meeting. So we'll get that situated hopefully in a day or two, knowing exactly what day we're going to do that. And I do have, and this, Anderson, you're going to be participating in something this weekend, end of the week, aren't you?
Yes, those are the law conference, the two half-day sessions.
We'll look forward to hearing your back on that. I'd love to go, but I have an outstanding company coming. Yeah, that sounds good. Where's that going to be at?
By your seven minutes.
Oh, okay. All right. I'll just backtrack, and this, evenings, this afternoon, we talked about the student that we wanted to have nominated, and if you will, if you'll just stop by and sign your name on the letter, we thought it'd be good. Ms. Lindsay's not here, but I'll see if she can run by the county office, hopefully Lauren, sign it, we can get that done. And then, thank you for that.
I'm going to try to, the liaison's get-together, the county commissioners.
Talk about that, see what we're coming up with.
So, about that, actually, if we could send out a survey not only to them but also to us, because I know the last time that we tried to do a joint thing, like, I couldn't make it, and it would just be nice to have everybody's availability, not just theirs.
You have schedules or something else too, so what's what we can do? We have nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.
We adjourned. Everyone have a nice week.